Here he is. Look at that. Right there. He's all over it.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November 17th meeting of the City Council for the City of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have a roll call, please? Bringle.
Aye. Here. Sorry. Aye.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Alcoff.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start tonight, I have a presentation. Mike Gesmi, could you come forward, please? Right up here to the podium. Well, we're gonna miss you around here. According to this plaque, you worked here in the
According.
Twenty-three years back here in the cable, and you've worked here since you were in high school. We really appreciate all the work you've done for us, and we're gonna miss you around here. So with that, here's a plaque for you on behalf of all the good work you've done for the City of Cannon Falls.
Well, thank you very much.
You bet. Good take off to And Mike, just to
Can't see your smile.
Very good, thank you. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I didn't prepare a speech because I didn't know if it was something bad or good, so I... Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this is probably the first time that you'll be able to leave before the meeting's over instead of
There you go.
I asked. I didn't want to be impolite.
Oh, there you go. You really started here when you were nine?
Something like that.
I'm impressed.
Okay, approve of the agenda. A motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Gesmi. Approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A: Just and Correct Claims for the Accounting Period Ending November 12th, 2020. Item B: Minute Meetings for the November 5th, 2020 City Council Meeting. Item C: Resolution 2520, Authorizing the 2021 City License Renewals. Item D: Resolution 2521, Accepting a Monterey Donation from Invenergy Cannon Falls LLC for $1,500 to the Fire Department. Item E: Approve the 2021 Goodyear County State Building Code Administration Agreement. Item F: Approve the donations of the VHF radios to a Wisconsin Fire Department. And G: Resolution 2522, Accepting a Transfer of Care's Money, $2,000, from the Stanton Township to the Ambulance Department. Is there anything the council would like to pull down? Anything? If not, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. I'll second.
Was it Montgomery or Matt? Motion by Duncan and a second by Lundell to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, council business. Police Officer Position. Neil or Jeff, who want to take that?
So, as you will see in the memo I prepared, Officer Fleur has left employment with the city, and I'm requesting approval to replace his position. Looking at first, an internal option, either a one of our part-time officers, or from our reserve ranks. Both are options we've utilized in the past. They have familiarity with the department and the community, especially for our reserve officers. It's proven a great path for us to get to see what they're like as far as working, before we, you know, make that offer to promote them to an officer position.
Okay. Any discussion by the council?
Jeff, refresh my memory, but it seems to me not too long ago that you're okay with what you had set up now, even though we were missing, because Fleur was on a leave of absence or whatever.
Well, there's a difference between being okay with a temporary problem and okay with a permanent problem. So at the time, we were making it work. Going forward, trying to make that work wouldn't be that feasible. Because in 2021, recall that we also are leaving vacant the position created open by Officer Ekstrom's retirement, with our plan to be not to use full-time or part-timers in a full-time capacity. Joe and I were gonna work to try to fill some of that as well, using our discretion to figure out what days we needed to be working our normal job, and what days we could work the patrol job. If we don't fill Officer Fleur's position, then we have to fill two positions, using part-time in ourselves.
Jeff, in the past, you've mentioned that in a normal situation, you come in and work, you know, eight to whatever, and Joe comes in, you know, noon, one o'clock, and we have an officer on duty. I have a problem with the scheduling stuff, having three people on at once.
Well, you shouldn't have a problem now, because that rarely occurs, being that Joe's primarily filling one of those two vacant positions.
Right, and I understand that. And that's why I'm wondering if, instead of looking for a full-time officer, if we should just add another part-time officer instead.
The problem with part-time officers is they cost us the same amount of money to hire and train, and they're immediately looking for another job. If we could get by with part-time officers, you'd see my budget reflect that. This is a full-time position. When we have them full-time, we could control their time, what they do. We're not competing with another job or a primary job. So I strongly encourage council to move forward with replacing this with a full-time position.
Have you approached the part-time officers we have now, and do they want to increase their on-duty time?
We're not gonna be able to get a significant amount of increase out of them. One has a full-time job working for Washington County, is willing to fill in as we need him on weekends or holidays that he's off that job. The other one, as a business that he's running, we've been very fortunate this year. Sadly, because of COVID, he's been available to us more, but I expect that when that changes in the retail world, he's gonna go back to his primary job as a primary function. I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of a full-time police officer.
I'll second it.
A motion on the floor to, by Montgomery, second by Bringle, to approve a full-time officer? Any discussion?
Yes. One more question, Jeff.
Yes.
Where were we at in our budget? Is that gonna reflect, was our budget already made out for Officer Fleur to be paid?
Yep. So this is a fully funded 2021 position. Nothing changes as we move forward. If anything, we could potentially have some savings. If we end up hiring an officer at a lower step, we would have some savings. I'm not gonna say it's going to be enough that we can go out and celebrate, but it could amount to a few thousand dollars.
Okay, one more question, I guess. Is there gonna be any hardships on the part-time? Are they, you know, as far as, are they gonna be pushed back too far the other way?
I don't believe so. What we envisioned, let's say Officer Fleur
Pretty good part-timer.
Yep. Let's say Officer Fleur was still with us. We would still be looking to utilize the part-timers at a rate that was consistent with what they were willing to commit. And they were willing to commit more if we needed them in emergencies. So like Fair Week, even the one that has a full-time job, would be willing to, you know, give us extra days during that. This year, 2020, we haven't needed them for any extra events. There just hasn't been anything. Everything that's been planned has ended up canceled. We'll see if the same thing happens with the upcoming, well, I guess we did do the trick-or-trot with the chamber. That pulled off. We've got the upcoming Deck the Falls, but that's even changing, and we'll have to see what changes between now and then, if that's gonna be impacted.
I just don't wanna see us starving on our part-timers where they get a bad taste in their mouth and don't wanna, don't wanna help us out, and then we're
No, no, I think both of our part-timers, when they came on part-time, they knew roughly what hours are available. If anything, in 2021, we will have more dedicated hours that they could work. But again, it's going to be trying to balance their schedules, my schedule, Joe's schedules, so that the three of, so to speak, three or four of us can fill that one full-time position without impacting the functions that I primarily perform or Joe primarily performs.
Well, I still disagree. I think a part-time officer would have been sufficient, but pretty obvious I'm gonna get outvoted here again. We still have a budget that's way too high for the police department, so.
Any other discussion?
I think we need to support our police a little bit more now, more than ever, because of what's been going on, the climate, particularly in our state. I think, being in a small town that's close to the metro area, we wouldn't wanna see our numbers get too low. We wouldn't wanna see officers leave. I think it might take longer than one would expect to get somebody back, and they're losing a staff position. They've lost somebody to retirement, and they just lost another officer who resigned. I think if we go too low, we could be in a really bad place in a hurry, especially, I mean, we're dealing with COVID. I think trying to get them as close to full strength, regardless of the cost, we gotta remember, this is a service, this isn't a business. This is a community, not a business. And the protection that we get from them is very valuable. So equating that to dollars and cents, I think we gotta look past that and say that, what about their well-being? And are they well-staffed enough to cover and protect our community? So I'm in favor of hiring as soon as possible.
My opinion is, I think whether we hire part-time or full-time, I think we gotta start the process. I mean, this probably gonna take three to six months to get anybody in here, part-time or full-time. I mean, we gotta start the process, but I am on the fence on whether a part-time or full-time, I guess.
Well, the motion, or what's on the agenda is for full-time. We'll open that door and see how that goes, and if it doesn't go well, then we'll have to readdress it and maybe knock it down to part-time. But for now, with what's written, the motion and the second, we're full-time.
Okay, any other discussion? Yeah, there's a motion on the floor to hire, and a second, to hire a full-time police officer. Let's take a roll call vote on that. Bringle.
Aye.
Duncan.
No.
Gesmi.
Aye.
Lundell.
Aye.
Mattson.
Aye.
Montgomery.
Aye.
The motion passes five to one. Okay. Get into reports. Kyle, some chamber?
Thank you all for being here tonight. The biggest thing on our schedule is, of course, Deck the Falls. We have really scaled Deck the Falls back this year, so that we are only having the parade at 5:00 PM that Saturday afternoon, and that's November 28th. Right now, we do have 23 units in the parade. We are looking for more, so please call the chamber, or walk in. I can catch you right at the front of the office. And the more, the merrier. It'll be a fun parade. In regards to, we move then to the lighting of the tree and the fireworks. And so what we have put out is that if people are parked in the city parking lot, or along the streets, if they would please stand by the riverside of their car. So if everyone does that, we're gonna have a car width in between all the families. Now, they can choose to stay in their car, which would be just fine, but this way, we are hopefully going to cement that social distancing in, and get that taken care of. The other thing that we have done with the parade is we have extended it for about two blocks. So instead of it stopping at the city parking lot, after it's turned onto Mill Street, it'll go past the winery, over the Mill Street Bridge, to the Hoffman Street intersection. And so people can fill that whole area up on both sides. So our effect on that is hoping to spread the crowd out, so that we can have social distancing also during the parade. If everyone would please wear your masks, that is also very important. Right now, we have received almost all of the funds that we need to pay for Deck the Falls. We are approximately $500 short, and that's it. And so I'm very pleased with that, but if you would like to make a sponsorship, please stop by or give us a call at the chamber. And then, Toys for Tots. We do have Freeburg Insurance, the library, the Chamber Office, and Mayo Clinic, who will have Toys for Tots boxes. They should be in our locations this week, and then they will be picked up, let me get that date. I wanna say they're picked up early December, right around December 7th. Okay? And so if you would like to help people out, so their children get to celebrate the holidays, please bring new products in. They need to be left open, so that the Toys for Tots people can see what it is. So they do not want it to be wrapped. Okay? And then, we are helping Northfield Chamber of Commerce. They are doing a raffle, and they asked if we would help them. And what it is, is for a 2020 Equinox. The raffle tickets are $100, and there's only 750 being sold. So the odds aren't too bad. There's also 15 other prizes that you can win for that one raffle ticket. So if you're interested in winning some prizes from Northfield, I mean, the first two prizes after the car are $1,000 in Chamber bucks over in Northfield. The third and fourth prizes are $500. And then they go on down. There, I know there's some Twins tickets, things like that. And so I do have that listing on the posters, so if you see a poster out and about, they'll be listed there. You do need to come to the Chamber Office to purchase your raffle ticket in person. It is cash or check only. And so we are helping Northfield out this time, and of course, they'll help us out in the future. Any questions about Deck the Falls, about COVID?
I do. I wanna thank you for all the work you've put on with Deck the Falls. Probably gonna sound like a bad guy here. I don't think we should do it. With schools being closed, now they're telling us we really shouldn't get together for Thanksgiving. Tomorrow, there's probably gonna be more restrictions, restaurants closed. I just think it's a bad look, that we're gonna get 25 floats, several hundred people altogether, when in another week or two, people don't know where their kids are gonna go during the day. So that's just me, not speaking for anyone else, but
No, and I'm collecting your comments as well. We do have a board meeting this Thursday, and I'm sure a final decision will be made.
Okay.
We're ready to go, if it's gonna happen. And if it's not, so be it.
Not to just echo Derek's sentiment, but it's not about the look. I love the idea of the tree lighting and the fireworks, because I think that's something that we could still practice safely. My hesitation is with the parade, and simply because we pulled off trick-or-trot, weather was beautiful, the people who are gonna be lining up with the parking and the crowd and the close, even though we're outside with masks, that, I'm much more concerned with the parade. And I think the sense of normalcy, I think the tree lighting and the fireworks will be fantastic, and I think those are things we can do safely. I'm just nervous about the parade, just
And I like that option. I mean, that's kind of a third option, doing the lighting and the fireworks without the parade, you know, doing all three, or not at all. And so I will definitely take that to the board. We've been receiving emails, we've been receiving phone calls, pros and cons both ways. And like I said, the sponsorships have been coming in the door, and that's telling me they want to do it. So, but I do believe it's for the fireworks. So, thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, Library Board. Nicole, are you up? Yeah, Nicole's there.
I am, yeah. Okay, so I will echo what Kyle said, that there will be a Toys for Tots box at the library, because we are currently doing appointment only. If anybody has any toys to drop off for Toys for Tots, please call us, or knock on the door, and then we can work with you to let you in to drop off toys. We don't want any toys dropped off outside the building, because then, of course, they would be ruined. So that being said, we also just today planned a new event that I think is going to be very fun, and it was because, with the input of our team advisory board, to have a virtual community Christmas concert. And so that is going to be Saturday, December 12th, 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and it's gonna be via Zoom. We have a sign-up team, yes, that Matthew set up just this evening, so that people can sign up for it. There will be available time slots that people can sign up for if they want to perform any singing. And then, we might be, I don't know for sure. I know I floated the idea of maybe doing like a sinewong as part of the whole deal. So this is open to everybody in the community to just, you know, we can't get together and sing Christmas carols, and we can't go caroling to people, but this is a fun way for people to get together and sing. And I really, really love that the teams came up with this idea. It was really a fabulous idea. So again, Saturday, December 12th, 6:00 to 9:00 PM, we should be having posters up around town within the next couple of days, and some more information online as that gets put together, because we just had this idea today. So that is really my big news.
Great. Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Planning Commission, Bill, Derek?
Thanks.
Yeah. Thanks. We passed that last week, Bill. Yeah, we passed that on last week, though. We haven't.
Well, that's right. We, we approved the addition and we passed, had that council meeting last week.
Yeah, the, you know, the 30,000 square foot addition, yeah.
Thirty-four, 30,000 square foot addition out of Banks Outdoors.
Yep.
Okay, EDA, Laura?
Hi, everyone. I'm coming to you from my quarantine in my basement. So a few things on my list, the Cannonbells Cheese Plant, construction's going to be on hold now till spring. Obviously, due to the weather, they didn't get the cement pad poured, so that now is obviously shut down for the, for this time of year, but we'll start right up as soon as they can in the spring. All of the CARES Act dollars that the city received, the $310,000, has now all been allocated. I won't give you every single detail, but we did get a new server for City Hall, a computer server, a remote SCADA system for the water treatment facility, so that if that needs to be, if there's alarms or something that goes off, that can all be managed remotely now. The school, we did give them about $30,000, just shy of that. There's a new phone system for City Hall as well, so that if everyone does go back or needs to go into a remote working environment at home, they can take their phone with them and plug it in at home, and it works just like they're sitting at their City Hall desk. So there shouldn't be any hiccups in that operation. And I believe the library also got that, too. Their, the fire department did get an online training subscription, so they can continue to do trainings if they need to do that remotely. And then there were some facility modifications for the DMV and City Hall. So that is good. So no money was rolled back to the county. That all stayed in Cannon Falls. So we were able to do some good upgrades without it affecting our general budget. The Good Hugh County CARES Grant for small businesses and nonprofits is absolutely complete and wrapped up. $2.2 million was allocated to small businesses, nonprofits, ag producers, churches, some assisted care facilities. And Cannon Falls had 59 businesses, or any in that category, totaling $588,000. So that's pretty exciting, that that money went to our local businesses. That was about 27% of the budget, which was the largest of all the communities in Good Hugh County. Cannon Falls was able to receive the most, just based on, you know, getting the word out there and, you know, people telling other people that they should apply. So everyone knows kind of each other's cheerleader on that. So that's fabulous, because they all really need it. So that, I'm happy to say, is all wrapped up with the Good Hugh County, or with the CARES program. It was, it was a big deal, but we're good. We're done. Some exciting news was last Thursday, Cannon Falls was, we were part of a multi-state showcase that was actually hosted by the University of Michigan Extension Group, and there were seven other states that were participating in this. It was Michigan, Minnesota, Missouri, Nebraska, NDSU, Go Bison, SDSU, Penn State, and New Hampshire were all, all had registered for this. And basically, it's, it's connecting entrepreneurial communities. So it was, it was the first time they had to do the conference virtually. It was a four-day showcase, and Cannon Roots was asked to speak, so I spoke on their behalf, and featuring the food cluster branding program that we've been able to identify and put together in Cannon Falls, so partnering our local food and beverage producers with the local experiences and attractions, such as the trail, the Cannon River, John Birch Park, Lake Billsby, campgrounds. So really kind of tying all those things together. And I think I had about 45 people on my, it was a breakout session, so there were 250 people, and I had 45 of them that were interested in the food cluster branding program that we've put together. So we had some national, national buzz. We had a lot of good feedback, and a lot of people wanting, you know, they're following Cannon Roots now, and they're really interested in what our local businesses are doing and how they're helping each other cross-promote each other's products. So then kind of bouncing off of that, the Feast Event that's usually held in Rochester the first week in December, that has been canceled now for this year. They, they were going to still try to do a drive-through at their farmer's market in Rochester, but just decided, obviously because of a lot of things that are going on, that they felt that that was just not going to be feasible at this time. So what I do want to encourage is that there are Feast magazines. I have a copy of it here, if you can see it. We have some of them at City Hall. You can also find them at Ferndale Market. The, let's see, Cannonbells will have some, Chamber, I believe, should be getting some. And I just encourage you to, you know, if you want to support local, this is a really great way to do that. I mean, we've got Black Friday already coming up next week, and before you go to Amazon for your holiday shopping, I really encourage you to really focus on shopping local this year. I always am the cheerleader for shopping local, but this year especially. You know, gift cards make good stocking stuffers. Any of the businesses are willing to put together a gift box for you, and they'll do curbside pickup. You can do curbside pickup for that. So if I can shout it from the mountaintops, I would. But I have this platform tonight, so I just really wanted to make sure that people do think locally before they shop online or leave our zip code to go Christmas, or, yeah, Christmas shopping. So, and if people aren't aware, Artisan Plaza did announce last night that they are, that Ole's Roadhouse is closed until most likely spring. The deli will be open till the end of the month, but they are still doing, taking orders for their Thanksgiving take and bake. So it's pretty sad that we're losing, we're losing one of our businesses, at least hopefully it's just temporary. But it's just, it can really impact the community if we lose any more businesses. So I just want to encourage you to go out to Artisan and maybe pick up a couple things for your holiday meal before they are closed at the end of the month. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
Thanks.
Okay, Staff, Jeff, you got anything? Neil?
Got a couple things. Thanks for everybody for bringing in your points for the legal RFP that we sent out. I'll get them tallied up and set the interviews for November 30th. As it said in the, the first one will be at 5:00, so come in a little earlier than that. We'll get organized. Public Works Director that we approved here, I think, two meetings ago, he will start on December 14th, so we'll welcome him then. We did do, we are working on a City Hall pandemic plan. We're trying to get organized in case something goes down that we'll have to scatter. We, somebody tests positive, and we'll have to work at home for a couple of weeks. It can happen tomorrow, it can happen next month, we don't know that. But we're getting closer and closer, like we have a phone system that Laura was talking about, that we'll be able to use at home if we have to be there. Tomorrow, we're going to get Sarah and Ellen set up for remote work, and then we're going to get a couple more next week to get the rest of us, just in case. So that plan is being developed. Fourth thing, I really want to thank Laura for all her work on this CARES Act. You can't imagine the work that was done in such a short period of time. And then to get 59 businesses from Cannon Falls, the extra money that they need just to stay afloat, it's amazing. Thanks, Laura.
Awesome.
That's all I got.
Okay, let's go around the horn. Derek, anything?
Uh, no, nothing tonight.
Steve?
Well, as long as Mike is still here, I just, I want to thank him again. There's, I was kind of witnessed the, some of the trials and tribulations he went through to keep us on the air many times. And, and I don't know how many years it was that our entry was used as a staging place for all the cameras and the equipment to be trade-offs and stuff. But, and he worked well with the, when we're getting the new contracts together with the cable companies, and he, he made darn sure he did his, did his research when he brought in new equipment. It was always top-of-the-line equipment, so. We're gonna, we're gonna miss you. That's all I got.
Morris?
Mike, it was a pleasure working with you. Like you mentioned about the cables and that, we went through a lot, and it was great. That's it.
Mary Jill?
Well, I know you more being your Sunday School teacher, a few times, than this, but I'm sure you did a great job here. No, I know you did. Thanks a lot for your help.
Well, yeah. Couple of quick things. Thank you, Mike. The Cable Commission, you did a great job. But the first time I met you, I don't know if you remember this, but we were at Tillian, and it was two years ago when I was running for council, and we were hosting an event, and there was nobody there, and you were there, and we started talking, and you're like, I'm not here for you, Steve's my dad. So I will, I will never, I'll never forget that, but it was a pleasure to meet you then, and it was, it was great working with you. And you did, honestly, you did so much work behind the scenes that people don't see. It's not just showing up here to the meetings or going to the events. There's a lot of work that went into that, so I appreciate all your help there. The other thing, I just want to, you know, I'm not a COVID expert, but working in the education world, I just want to thank all of our teachers and the administrative staff. Everybody is working so hard right now. They are doing backflips to try to figure out how we're going to get through this. We did distance learning last spring. It's different this year. The numbers that we're facing are much more dire, and people's situations have changed. We did get to do some normal, we got a quarter in. We felt like it was somewhat normal with the hybrid in the, in the senior high and the middle school, but now things are changing. So I'm thinking of all those families that are, you know, trying to figure things out here and scramble, and I, I hope that everybody is safe through Thanksgiving, and just want to recognize those teachers that are doing everything they possibly can to try to keep things normal, and to keep educating and taking care of these kids. Thanks.
Phil?
Like everyone else, Mike, thank you for all your years of service. It's really appreciated, and again, just thank you. That's it.
Yeah, Mike, we're going to miss you around here. Like I say, you've been a fixture around here for a long time. You've done such an excellent job that more power to you for moving on, but we'll, we'll miss you here. I want to also, Laura, again, congratulate you. All that work you did on that CARES, that was something else. And to get 59 businesses in town, like Neil was saying, that was a lot of work, a lot of effort on your part. We thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, a couple other people have put in a lot of time lately is Bill and Morris, working with our labor agreements. Neil and those two have been here, days at a time, working on these three labor agreements with the city, and more power to you guys, too. You put in a lot of extra time on that.
Yeah, Neil's a tough one. We don't even get lunch.
And, and we got, we got quite a bit more work to go yet.
A water break, but that's it.
Well, you got a little work left, but thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Make sure you put November 28th on your calendar, Deck the Falls. We'll see if what happens with that. I guess we'll know more at the end of the week. Again, like Laura was saying, be nice to shop local. I mean, these businesses need our help in town. We've seen a big business kind of shut down here, and it bothers me, but see if you can shop local and put them on your, you know, help them out, I'd sure appreciate it. Bombers, number three, Class A. I don't know if the playoffs are going to.
Two.
Two.
Yeah, it is in 3A.
Oh, 3A.
In 3A, yeah. It's a class, but they're ranked number two.
I don't know. We'll find out tomorrow if they play Saturday, but it, it'll be good luck to them on Saturday if they play. Okay, with that, I'm going to open for public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. The City Council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Anybody for public input? We'll open the public input hearing. Anyone? Third and final call for public input. Hearing none will close the public input, and I take a motion to adjourn.
So what?
Second.
Motion by Gesmi, second by Duncan, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried.